Welcome to the Finance Committee review of the FY25 Annual Town Meeting happening Tuesday, May 7, 2024 at the middle school. My name is Stephen Vannuti. I'm Chair of the Finance Committee.
Fred Faulkner, Vice Chair.
And we're going to just step through all the financial articles that we're going to see at the town meeting and talk a little about the process that we went through in developing this year's budget, which was a little different than what we had experienced previously. Starting in early in September,
September, yep.
We asked department heads to submit their budgets. We knew it was going to be a tough year, and what the busted budgets came in at is a $3.3 million deficit. Now, a deficit at that time of year isn't generally a surprising thing. It's the level of the deficit that concerned us a lot. Usually, it's, you know, $1 to $2 million, but $3.3 million was a bit much to deal with. Assistant Town Administrator Ryan Farrar and the finance team did a great job in going through and presenting the Finance Committee and Select Board with first pass of a balanced budget. Both boards then made some tweaks to the budgets as we went through the process to refine things, but there were some very serious cuts that were done to get us to where we are today and what we'll be presenting at town meeting on the 7th. And you can see on the slide, or you can throw the slide back up, the difference categories that we have these cuts on. So we had expense cuts totaling $2.2 million. We used other funds for $1.1 million. We actually increased our revenue assumptions by $217,000 and offset that with some expenses that came in at the last minute for $218,000. And you can see in the pie chart the level of those things. Fifty-seven percent of what we did were expense cuts. Some of the major things that happened in coming up with these cuts that we did, we were very fortunate that we still had some COVID relief funding called ARPA funding. And we have $1 million of ARPA funding that hadn't been allocated yet, and we have the town's betterment for the SOAR that needs to be paid. It was sitting originally in the town's operating budget. We were able to use these ARPA funds and apply it that the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, excuse me, Select Board voted to apply these funds. $825,000 out of that $3.3 million came right off the table, which was a huge relief for us
Absolutely.
in getting that number down. One of the things that we also do as we come up with our budget scenarios is to be very conservative in our revenue forecast, and that helps us not only in being ready to fund things that may come up during the year, but also it is the biggest contributor to the free cash that the town has, and the free cash position that we have replenishes our capital plan each year. Originally, there was a $730,000 increase in our revenue assumptions. We knew we couldn't let that much flow into the operating budget, so we were able to reduce that down by some additional expense cuts to offset it down to $217,000. Another big thing that we had in coming up with these cuts was to reduce some of the reserves that we had, our allocations of reserves. Our fiscal policy reserve was reduced by $200,000. Finance Committee's reserve fund was reduced by $50,000, and we're not making contribution to our general reserves this year, stabilization funds for $150,000.
One point on that is that we were able to stay with our policy, our financial policy, even though we cut back. So we cut it back to bare bones, but we stayed within the financial policy that we had created years ago.
Right. That's a very good point. So the financial policy states that the balance of our general stabilization account has to be at least 5% of the operating budget. And with the interest rates increasing, we're actually earning a lot more than that $150,000 in that account. So it's because of those earnings that we're able to skip the addition from the operating budget this year. So it was a net zero change for us, which was very helpful for us. We had some changes to our staffing also. The original request was for two new police officers. Were able to add one to the operating budget, but unfortunately, we had to eliminate a second officer position. The Finance Director position in town was also eliminated. It's combined with the Assistant Town Administrator's position, which is a big cost savings for the town. That position has been going up in salary. The position was harder and harder to find somebody, and unfortunately, we had some turnover in that position over the past few years. The third thing as far as salaries and staffing goes, Parks and Rec Department asked for the town to fund 100% of the admin staff that they have there, currently funds 50%, and we had to keep that at 50%, so we couldn't fund that position at the total 100% that we had. Employee benefits was a big reduction for us also, $976,000. Our health insurance, we had an assumption in there for a large health insurance increase. We're very fortunate that the renewal rate on that was much lower than we anticipated, and we saved $300,000 on that. We also reduced our OPEB and pension funding to the tune of $673,000. Both big reductions for the town. Some other notable reductions, I'd like to thank the School Department for their contribution to help solving our budget. They were able to eliminate $250,000 from their budget. Fire Department, we reduced overtime costs, and you'll see when we talk about what actually made it into the fire budget. We have three new firefighters that are coming online this year. Because of that, we had this overtime reduction. We were able to reduce police overtime by $100,000 and our debt service by $369,000 because of the use of some betterment funds that we have for our SOAR department and some state funding we have for our library debt service. We're able to apply against that debt that we've already placed by $169,000.
Okay, the sources of our funds, you know, where does the money come from? As you can see on this pie chart, the vast majority, excuse me, come from property taxes, approximately 70%. And we, excuse me, we receive state aid to the tune of about $6.5 million and local receipts to tune of about $4 million. Excise tax, hotel tax, meals tax, building permits, that kind of thing adds up to around $4 million. And those are sort of the ongoing funds that we have. And then sort of one-time funds, we have undesignated fund balance or what oftentimes is called free cash. We're using a significant amount of that this year. And the transfers from other funds, we are using some of the stabilization funds and money we've put away that you'll see when we talk about the articles for things like renovating Indian Hill. Go to the next slide.
While we're still on that, things like the use of the free cash allocation, the undesignated fund balance, and our transfers from stabilization. These are all planned things that the town does. The use of our undesignated fund balance has been funding our capital program. I went back and I looked, it's the past 20 years that we've been using our free cash position and capital stabilization to fund our capital plan. Those are the things that have helped us get to the point where we are financially today with our AAA bond rating. We were just affirmed once again by Standard and Poor's for a AAA rating. It's very important for the town because it's reducing the interest costs that we pay. The more that we don't have to pay an interest cost to investors, the more we can keep in town, the more we can apply to the operating budget to pay the salaries and benefits of the employees who provide the services to the town, and that's what's important for us.
Good points. Okay, the uses of the funds. Town budget is about 23%. School budget plus technical school or Nishobetec budget is about 36%. And if you add in the employee benefits, all towed with debt service, which is sort of the operating side of the budget, it's about 80% of our spending all rolled together. The capital, capital planning and warrant articles this year is about $7 million. State assessments, you know, the state giveth and the state takeeth away, it's about $1.9 million. And additions to stabilization accounts are a little over $1 million this year. So, you know, the first slide showed sort of where does the money come from. This slide shows, you know, where the money goes.
A lot of things that we've talked about so far and touched on. You know, received our town meeting booklet in the mail. FinCom report starts on page four, and it goes into a lot of the detail that we've just talked about as far as where we started with the budget and what we're going to be looking at moving forward. We get to Article Four, and again, this is exactly what is going to be presented at town meeting. Talked about the town operating budgets. We look, separate that out. Town increase of $700,000 of 4.45%. We've added three new firefighters inside this budget and one new police officer. Those are the big staff additions that we've had. School Department and Nishobetec, an increase of $1.1 million of 4.57%. That's even with the reduction that the School Department had for that $250,000. One of the big things that we're seeing now, and we will see over the next few years, is an increase in the town's debt service. We have a lot of projects going on right now, and the two that are listed here, the senior center construction and the Indian Hill building purchase, are just two of the things that are ongoing. One of the things that's really missing here that is debt service but doesn't show up on the town's operating budget as debt service is the SOAR department. We are still the only user of the SOAR, and while construction's going on, the town is footing the bill for the debt service that we're paying for these construction costs as the only user of the SOAR system in town. It's our responsibility. This year, that's, and we'll see this in a couple of slides, it's around $650,000 in debt service payments that are made. We're offsetting a little of it with the betterment that we're using. But next year is where the big pieces of that increase are going to be seen. So not only in FY26 are we going to see the senior center probably bonded at that point, so those costs will go up. Indian Hill will be bonded, those costs will go up, and we'll also have the SOARs. And so debt service is going to be a big piece of our operating budget moving forward.
Right, the SOAR, for example, next year in the FY26 budget will increase by another million dollars over what we're paying this year. So just to give you a bit of scale of what we're going to be looking at next year, it's pretty sizable with the two construction projects plus the SOAR debt service. It'll be a significant rise in debt service.
And one of the things that we intend to do in front of, before a town meeting, when we open up, the Finance Committee is going to be doing a report touching on some of these things that we're talking about today, but also looking forward and presenting what we're seeing happening over the next two or three years down the road, and that's going to be very important. Article Four highlights, and you can see on this slide, because the graph, and you can see the last three years, '23, '24, and '25, and just the increases that happened between town, schools, and other, other being employee benefits and debt service being the two big components of it. The total budget increase of $3.4 million, 5.92% over FY24, and you saw the breakouts between those things. What we plan on doing right now is taking a quick walk through the warrant articles, any of the financial articles that we have, things that the Finance Committee has voted on one way or the other. We talked to Article Four already, the operating budget. There are so many things that go into that operating budget. Please read the town report. Be well-versed in those departmental budgets. There is really bare bones in there. Our department heads did a fantastic job in coming up and being able to work with the cuts that were going to be happening. They've all been, sat down and made their presentations to both the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen, and they realized that the position that the town's in, not to say that the town's finances aren't solid, the town's finances are probably more solid than they have been in years. It's trying to keep that going, trying to keep the increases that we're seeing to a manageable level until some of the revenue stream that we're expecting with some of the renovations going on in town are going to be able to come to fruition, and that's going to be always down the road. So some of the articles, we can just go back and forth on these things. Article Two, bills of prior year. This will probably be on the consent agenda. A lot of these articles may be on the consent agenda, but they're still important to know. Article Two is $1,100 in legal fees from FY23.
I'll do Article Three because there's nothing there.
Article Three line item transfers, there will be nothing presented for that article for this year. Article Five is the Water Enterprise Budget. It's an increase of $471,000 over FY24, and the thing that's different from this year than other years is they're actually utilizing $60,000 of water betterment revenues that they received from when they sent water over to the point. So now they're able to start using some of that revenue stream to do other improvements and to offset some of their operating budget. Article Six is an amendment to the FY24 Water Budget, and the only thing that's changed there is they've moved some of the $1.9 million from the Capital Outlay Improvements line item to a separate special purpose appropriation. It's just allowing them to use those funds over several fiscal years. It's not closed out at the end of a fiscal year, so it's something that they can be using ongoing.
It just gives them a little more flexibility in their project planning. Okay, Sewer Enterprise Fund, this coming year will be about $900,000, including $650,000 in debt service. And as Steve mentioned, as the town is the only user at this point, we're footing the entire bill. This utilizes about $200,000 in sewer betterment revenues, and he also mentioned that we paid about $800,000 in betterment money through ARPA, and that's $200,000 of it basically coming back to this operating budget. The FY26 expected debt service and operations covered by the town will be more like $1.8 million. So the $650,000 is going up by over $1 million next year, and we know that's there because it's debt. So we've already got a big nut to try to figure out how to cover next year. Article Eight is the purchase of the Webster property. The new appraisal came in for the property at $730,000 for the purchase of 36 and 1/2 acres. As we've done for the past 12 or 15 years, when we purchase property for conservation purposes, we use CPA funds, which we've all been paying into for the last, again, 12 to 15 years. And if the purchase price is less than or equal to the appraised value for 36 and 1/2 acres, then we would support purchasing the property only through the use of CPA funds. Article Nine is the CPC blended fund transfers from free cash. There's $287,136 in total to provide funding for various projects. This increases the base amount eligible for state matching funds. And traditionally, the state matching has been in the 20% to 30% of basically free money from the state. If you put it into CPC, they will match it, and then CPC can authorize it to come out with town meeting vote to be used on the various projects.
One of the things with this contribution into the CPA funds, that $287,000 is basically a three-quarter, right now, we pay a 1% surcharge on our tax bills for this CPA funding. This is an extra 3/4 of 1% that's going over. There was something that was brought forward, the CPC actually wanted to increase that surcharge to 2%, and what we did when we discussed this, to try and keep the taxes lower, because we know what's coming up with Chaker Lane, is to try and use some of the town's available funds to make contributions to pay for some of these projects. There's no way that we can come up with the full 3% that the state allows to get there, but every little bit helps when you're getting a 10% to 15% state match on those funds. Those $287,000 go a long way, and it's divvied up into those same four or five buckets that the CPC controls.
Yep. And Article 10 is in your booklet, and it's basically the list of projects to be funded this year by CPC funds as it's approved by the CPC. Next slide.
Article 12, the funding for 36 King Street rehabilitation. This is the Indian Hill building. So a couple of town meetings ago, we actually purchased that property with a special town meeting in February of last year, I believe. We purchased the building for $3.5 million. Last May, there was a warrant article on the warrant to do some of the renovations to that property. The Finance Committee at that point kicked back a little bit on the need for that article at that point in time, and the Select Board agreed, and that article was pulled and never made it to town meeting. And what this is doing is, and we gave the town administrator at the time kind of his marching orders basically, to go out to bid, let's get bids in hand, and then go back to town meeting with a definite amount instead of an estimate of what the cost is going to be for this project. That's what happened. We have bids in hand right now for $2,981,047. Last town meeting, we put away $4 million for this project in our capital stabilization account, so we'll be withdrawing this $2.9 million from that $4 million. The remainder of that money stays in the capital stabilization fund to be used for future projects that the town has, future capital needs that we have. We need to get this building occupied. It's deteriorating with nobody in there. This is the opportunity to do this renovation, to get it done, to get the School Department and Parks and Rec Department into that building and get some vitality in that part of town. Article 14, the approval of town revolving funds is a standard annual article. It just sets the amount that can be expended from those revolving funds for the different town departments. Article 15, the use of the prudent investor rule.
Okay, I'll take this one, I'm this year's Chair of the Trust Fund Commission, and the prudent investor rule is, it just allows the flexibility, allows the trustees and town treasurer some flexibility in the investment strategies that we can use for the town's trust funds. We've been working with a trust fund manager or a fund manager along with the treasurer for a number of years now, and have done pretty well. And just as an aside, this past January, we voted to, the trust fund commissioners and treasurer voted to distribute approximately $150,000 of income that we made over the last, the previous 12 months with the trust fund. So it is a vital source of revenue for activities in the town. Approximately $100,000 is going to scholarship funds for kids from Littleton. About $40,000 is going to the school project, which we'll talk to in a few minutes, and the rest is being distributed to things like Lyceum, and the EHS department is also managing a small fund as well. So this just gives the trustees a little more leeway and flexibility on our investment strategies. Article 16, trust fund disbursements. As I mentioned earlier, $40,000 is going to Russell Street Mindfulness Room. It's a dedicated space within the school to provide a calming and sensory-rich environment for students with autism and complex needs. If a child is just having a really tough time in a classroom, there is a specific space where they can go and sort of regather themselves under supervision and then come back to the classroom. The second article, the second piece of the article is $4,000, which will be managed by the EHS department for animal assistance and care program, and that's defined by the trust that the money comes from. It is to go to care and betterment of animals in the town, and we feel this is a good way to handle it. The EHS group, if they have people who are having trouble paying the veterinary bills or whatever, they have some funds for some assistance. Okay?
Article 17 is an amendment to a previous article, is amendment to the Oak Hill Stabilization Account. It's just simply adding language to make some funds available for maintaining conservation land. Article 18 on the next slide is $20,000 transfer from the Oak Hill Stabilization Fund to the Conservation Department for maintenance projects on conservation land. Article 19 is FY25 capital purchases. It's 1.4, almost $1.5 million in capital purchases coming from free cash. Again, I went back and I looked, the last time, Fred, I don't know if you remember this, but we were both on FinCom, the last time that we actually bonded a piece of capital was 20 years ago
Yep.
in FY04.
Right.
It's been a long time. We have been paying cash for our capital, and that has saved the town so much in interest costs
Ton of interest, yeah.
And especially with our AAA rating, we're paying a little less of an interest rate on those funds. The complete list of capital purchases starts on page 52 of the town meeting booklet. The complete list of capital purchases starts on page 52 of the town meeting booklet. Big items, refurbishing Engine One for the fire department for $175,000. DPW street sweeper for $300,000. Three police cruisers for $200,000. Those are annual articles for the police cruisers. As we take two or three cruises each year out of their fleet and replace them, because they get a lot of, not only mileage, but wear and tear on their engines. And numerous articles for the school department.
The school articles add up to about $385,000 of the 1.5 million. So it's a, it's a pretty big chunk going to support school projects.
Article Twenty also uses free cash to pay for some other items, non-capital items, basically. Taking $25,000 to pay for a grant writer, a consultant, to help write some grants for some departments in town so we can see if we can bring some funds into town, whether the state grants, federal grants, or whatever is out there to try and offset some of the costs that we have. Looking to update the classification plan for non-union employees for $45,000. Transfer from the, into the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund for $125,000. This is a fund that was set up back at special town meeting, May 7th of 2018. And it put aside $350,000 to pay the salaries of injured firefighters and police officers. And we've currently been paying one salary out of that fund. And we need to replenish that, those, that fund back up to the 350 level. Article Twenty-One. Article Twenty-One amends, again, a previous article that was voted, the May 2nd, 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Article Twenty is the first article for the senior center that was presented. It allocated $1.5 million in borrowings to design the building. The cost of design the building was a lot less than the 1.5 million. So this article simply asks to amend it to include design in construction. So we can use those dollars to also help with the construction side of the buildings. This does not add any additional funds to the project. It is what it is. And they are, they are well aware of the budget that they have.
Absolutely. Okay, we have Article Twenty-Two, which is the LCTV operating budget. The budget is $458,000 to fund the FY '25 salaries and operations for LCTV. The funds are spent from the Public Education and Government, or PEG Access Cable Related Fund. Article Twenty-Three is the FY '25 Compensation Grid. It shows a 2.5% COLA increase in compensation for non-union employees. That's been well-vetted through all of the departments and various committees. Article Twenty-Four.
Just one second on the compensation grid. The cost, Article Twenty-Three shows what the salaries will be. The costs of those increases are already included in Article Four. So it doesn't add any additional dollars outside of what's sitting in Article Four already.
Okay, Article Twenty-Four is a capital stabilization deposit, basically one and a half million dollars from free cash. And this is to fund future capital projects. And as Steve mentioned before, we try to avoid borrowing as much as we can for these projects. And by putting money into the stabilization fund on an annual basis, we so far have been able to keep up with that.
One of the things that is key with the rating agencies and Standard and Poor's, who has given us our AAA bond rating, is the level of reserves that the town has, a plan to use those reserves and the ability to replenish those reserves. And that's what Article Twenty-Four is doing. It's replenishing those reserves. It's putting extra money in there for future capital needs. And we've demonstrated over the past 10 years that we've had a AAA rating, that we have the ability to do that.
Okay. And Article Twenty-Five, we're actually using some of what we have in capital stabilization to draw down the amount that we would have to bond or borrow for 36 King Street. So this is an example, right after we're putting some money in, we're taking some money out to actually lower how much we're going to have to bond in a rising interest rate environment. So it's really important for us to manage these funds in this manner.
And those funds were specifically put into capital stabilization back in last year's town meeting for this purpose. Because we knew we would be bonding during FY '25. Article Twenty-Six is the creation of the School Building Stabilization Fund. We're taking $1.1 million from free cash and setting up the stabilization account specifically for school projects, such as the Shaker Lane building. We know something is going to happen with Shaker Lane. Right now, we don't know what that's going to be, whether it's going to be a renovation of the existing building, new construction, or a combination of the two. Or we renovate the existing building and put an addition on. We don't know what that's going to look like. All we know is that that bill, no matter what it is, is going to be large. If it's a new construction, we can be safe to say that it'll probably be the largest project that the town has ever done. We're talking about, you know, we just are doing a sewer system. We did a water treatment plant. We've built a high school a while ago now, but we've built a high school. This has the potential to dwarf the cost of those projects. Finance Committee, and we'll say this over and over again, Finance Committee will be looking for a debt exclusion override for this project. So anything that we can put aside into the stabilization account over these next couple of years until construction goes on.
Try to minimize the pain.
Is going to try and minimize the effect on the taxpayer. And that's what we intend to do as best we can. And speaking of minimizing the effects of the taxpayer, this, Article Twenty-Seven uses the Debt Exclusion Stabilization Fund. This is a fund that was first done in FY '17. Deposits are made into that out of available funds that we have, notably free cash. And then it's applied to the excluded debt on existing excluded items, such as Russell Street and the middle school and the police station, were three projects that were done by debt exclusion overrides. So far, since FY '17, we've been able to put $2.6 million of technically inside levy money to help pay outside levy debt service. And that's helped decrease the amount of the taxes that the taxpayer has to pay. Doesn't sound like much, but last year it saved us 17 cents on the tax rate, which is a few hundred dollars for everybody. Article Twenty-Eight is another big article. It's appropriating $2,604 from revenues that we receive from Uber and Lyft for rides that originate in the town of Littleton. I think we receive like 10 cents per ride. That's done, that's going to be sent over to the DPW for some road-related projects. Excuse me, Article Twenty-Nine is simply a placeholder right now for collective bargaining agreements. We are in discussions with four unions right now. DPW, Dispatch, Fire, and Police. We don't have agreements with any of those unions right now. But in case something does happen before town meeting, there is a placeholder and we'll have some dollar amounts for those agreements. And finally, Article Thirty is the withdrawal from, of the town from the Neshoba Associated Boards of Health. This is providing Neshoba with a one-year advance notice of our withdrawal from the service. We have a new health director that we've hired. And the plan is to transition that health department service in-house work in tandem with Neshoba during this year of transition to get the person up to speed as to what the local services are all about. And then in two, in, one year after this, is to totally bring that service in-house and all the fees that are related to that would come into the general fund. Those are all the financial articles. Again, we ask that you please read the Finance Committee's report. Starts on page four of the book. There's a lot of good information in that. Do I have anything else to add?
No, just see you on Tuesday, the 7th of May at town meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.